All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Newburyport Public Schools School Committee. This is meeting for September 21st, 2020. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Reardon.
Here.
Mayor Holliday.
Present.
Mr. Menon.
Here.
Mr. Hockhiser.
Here.
Ms. Falding.
Here.
And Mr. Cole.
Here.
All present, we have a quorum. Could we please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance to the republic, and to the citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
We are going to open the meeting with public comment. We would ask those who are interested in offering public comment through Zoom to raise your hands, and we will then unmute you or call you. Public comment is just that, comment. It's not conversation. Mrs. Kennedy is taking down notes to make sure that everybody's point is captured. So we appreciate your passion and ask you to maintain civility and respect. And we're ready to open.
So do you want to raise your hands?
What?
Tell them they have to raise their hands.
Yeah, you do have to raise your hand. Use the raise your hand feature on Zoom to speak, to be invited to speak. Ms. Burns, you can... Yeah, you can start talking.
Ms. Burns, you can.
Yes, hi there. I'm sorry. I'm just trying to change my profile picture. I'm sorry. I'm just trying to change my profile picture. Sorry, I can't seem to get my profile picture to change.
You can hear you perfectly well, so feel free to share.
Here we go. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
I can hear you very well.
Okay. Yes, thank you. I apologize. My name is Lori Fisher-Burns, and I live at 1166th Street in Newburyport, Mass. And I just wanted to quickly comment. I wanted to thank... My son is a sophomore at the high school currently, and I really wanted to thank our special ed liaison at the high school, Ms. Beth Blynn. She did a tremendous job of reaching out to our family prior to the school year in regards to pretty much explaining, my son is on an IEP, how things were going to progress for the first few weeks. And after having, you know, she spent about an hour with us, both of us on the phone, my son and I, saying that we could reach out to her at any time and that she and I would be in contact with one another, you know, to constantly be touching base to see how things were going. So with that said, I am extremely happy with the support that I've received. But with that said, my son normally, on a normal schedule, would be visiting with his special ed teacher in the high school six times over two weeks, which is 60% of the time, he would be one-on-one in a special ed classroom. And based on the new model, the new hybrid model, where they're only going to school twice every other week, he will only be meeting with his special ed teacher twice in 10 days, which is 10%. So it's dropped from 60% one-on-one to 10%. And I just wanted to express my concern with the lack of support for a student like my son who needs support, as do all of our students at the high school. I don't feel that this has been taken into consideration when they planned out the schedule with our children meeting twice every other week. So I just wanted to express my frustration and my severe concern for the lack of support that a child like myself is going to receive. And that was pretty much it. I want to thank you very much. I know that everyone's working very hard, but I want to leave you with this last note that I really am hoping that tonight's meeting is going to show parents who are watching the meeting how our school is going to move forward with having our children being in the classrooms, in-person learning, for full-time as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person who would like to speak is Carol Sanchez.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great, thank you. Thank you so much for letting me speak. I am Carol Sanchez, and I live on Plum Island in the Newburyport side. I have a senior at Newburyport High School. This is her third year there, and first of all, I want to thank the teachers, the staff, and the administration. My son started there as a sophomore, and he has just flourished. And I truly, truly appreciate everything that the building has done for him. He loves it there, not to mention the families and the kids who welcomed him in. But I'm going to try to be quick and succinct. I took an informal poll of my son's friends, all seniors, plenty of them, boys and girls, and I said, "Do you all want to be back in school?" And not a one said no. They all want to be back in the building. I must also add, they are not happy with the fact that you separated grade 12 from A to L, I think, and then L to Z. So they're not at the same time, in the same building, which as seniors is like, that's what you cherish, that's what you want to be. Like, you can't wait to be a senior and like, own the building. That is what we all did, and that's what we all want, and I want that for them, and they want it for themselves. So I was trying to be creative with them, and myself, and my friends, and so some of the ideas we came up with is to say, couldn't you open the gym and separate that into different classrooms and block them off so that you could get the entire alphabet for one grade in at once? And again, thinking out of the box, if there are specific kids who need specific needs, you could rent the PETA hall, you can rent the Newburyport Youth Building, and try to get everybody in to be live with their separate and succinct needs, but then trying to get everybody in together at the same time. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
All right, thank you very much. Jean Novak. Mr. Novak, we are prepared for public comment with you.
You can hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I didn't think I'd get on so quickly. Jean Novak, 161 Nolan Boulevard, the Plum. Again, we just want to thank all the faculty, staff, and teachers. They've been wonderful, and I know everybody's working double time during this pandemic. And I would just ask anybody listening, for those who can get a flu shot, would encourage you to get your immunization as soon as possible to help alleviate some confusion as we head into fall. It's something that can do, it should be done. And I too just want to request that for the students and faculty who wish to return to in-school learning, that they do so for a bunch of reasons. Just quickly, you know, students need structure. Some need it more than others. I have a daughter who came home from school, and she would just open her books up and do her homework with no prodding, nothing. She did this all her life. She generally gets As and Bs, and she's doing fine academically. On the other hand, I had two boys, and they need structure, prodding, you know, looking over. They need that, especially, you know, my youngest son, who's a senior now. And my concern is that, you know, two days every other week is just not going to cut it. It may in the end, I just don't see that sitting at home and on the computer is going to be the best for him, only because I know who he is and how he is, and he needs that structure, and we're going to do everything we can to keep him on top of his studies. But the bottom question at the end of the day is, if there's not a compelling reason not to be in class, why isn't he in class? You know, there's so many things that are coming up short with, the socialization, just the exercise and fitness of walking around, walking to school, walking in a classroom rather than sitting at home. I just don't see it viable as a long-term solution. This is America, we should be able to choose, and for those who want to go to school, as long as we can meet the CDC guidelines and the state guidelines, you know, for those who choose to be in class, whether you're a faculty or a student, you should have that choice, sooner rather than later. I know we lost two weeks or so, we lost some time at the end of last semester, and I didn't think that starting two weeks late wasn't not a big confidence builder. And I know a lot of this hinged on the state and other agencies for the guidance and direction, but I would have thought, having lost, you know, part of last semester, they would have started early if anything and not later. So just, you know, was one more concern. So I just ask to please make accommodations for those of us who wish to go back voluntarily that we can do as soon as possible. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. Matthew Kane. Matthew, you can offer your public comment now. Matthew?
Hey, sorry. I unmuted. Thanks, everybody. Thank you for your time. Matthew Kane, 63 Cars on the Road. So just a couple of thoughts. First, I'm pretty sure most people in this room have been downtown over the last few weeks. It's been beautiful out, and there's been hundreds of people down there, all walking around, bumping shoulders, wearing masks, right, shopping. Everybody here goes to Market Basket, some people go to Shaw's, same thing happens. People wear masks, they walk by each other, sometimes they talk to each other. Nobody's dropping dead, right? There hasn't been this big outbreak. Restaurants, right? You go sit in a restaurant, server comes up to you with a mask on, but you're sitting there without a mask on. So my point there is simply that masks work, right? You guys are sitting in this room tonight, many of, you know, sometimes these things really drag on for hour after hour, and I dare I say, some of you are in the at-risk category, where you're sitting three or four feet apart from each other. So can we get kids back in school? Absolutely, we can. We need metrics to do that, right? And I want to read a quote to you that just came on the news about a half an hour ago. So it was from James Riley, who's the Secretary of Education, and it says, "In light of stark discrepancy between local public health data and your reopening plan, I am requesting a timeline by which you anticipate providing in-person instruction for the majority of your students." It goes on to say, "Please note that your response may trigger an audit to assess overall efforts to provide in-person instruction and ensure your remote learning program is consistent with," I don't know, some crazy number. So my point is that we can do this, I really just need everybody in this room to be thinking like that, right? And the one last thing I just want to say is, everybody's pro teacher. I think the teachers clearly recognize that they're better off in the class, it's going to be a lot easier to teach. Watching, you know, what I watched today and the first day, and what I've heard today from the first day, that's not going to work. And I'm not, certainly not anti-teacher, they're doing their best they can. I'm not anti-union even. But the other thing that really just doesn't smell right, and a lot of people are talking about in town, is the fact that the union came and said, "Well, hey, our kids can go to school, but yours can't." So that, there's a lot of people talking about that as well, and I don't, you know, it just doesn't, it's not a good look for the school system. So I hope you guys can do your best to continue to do better, because it's, it's really only thing we can do at this point is do better. It's hard to imagine it getting worse. So thanks, guys, for your time.
Thank you very much. Andrew Cooper. Andrew, if you can hear me, you can offer your public comment.
Sure can. Thank you so much. Thanks for having us in tonight and for your guys' time. Shout out to all the teachers and staff, absolutely, that exemplify wonderful teaching, such as a shout out to Mrs. Petrie. My kids were both Petrie peeps, and she just did an awesome job, as she continues to do every single year, in reaching out to all of us parents and kids, you know, wishing us the best. So yeah, we all do very much support our teachers and staff out there, and you guys have been doing a wonderful job with a very limited deck to work off of. I just wanted to briefly mention that I support what Lori Burns said, Carol Sanchez, Mr. Novak, and Matt Kane. I didn't want to come and say, although it is very odd for many of us parents in town, that somehow sports are being played, where they're playing in very close, if not bumping up against each other proximity without masks on, which leaves a little bit of a head-scratcher. And certainly, we want to make sure our kids get back into class, where it's more of a controlled environment than an open field. And I'm fully in support of sports, I don't want that being shut down, let's keep that going. I certainly wouldn't want to come in and comment on how there is, or our kids, pardon me, crossing each other up and down stairwells at the school right now, passing by each other perfectly fine and safely, but remember, that was a basis for a no-no, that we didn't want kids doing that. And then today, having a teacher that was working remotely with one of my two kids that simply didn't show, nor did she notify anybody in the classroom, any of the kids. There was no emergent way to say, when I reached out immediately to the high school, "What's going on? Where's the teacher? Kids have been sitting for 20 minutes, we don't know what's happening." So I don't want to focus on that negativity, but that has to be brought to bear and understanding. And my goal tonight is to reiterate what I've been saying all along, which is, I'm 100% in support of getting these kids back into full-time school learning. They need it for all the reasons that others have already mentioned tonight, and I'm hoping that we get very clear metrics, as well as dates, for a full-time return to school for the kids. So thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you very much. It does not look like there's anybody else looking to offer public comment, so I am going to close public comment at this time.
Should we just push on the chat? Does everybody know how to use their hand up feature?
Thank you. So many people came on, I may not know.
I think Bruce had her hand up earlier, for example. Okay. But, Brian, or...
Bruce, do we read the emails we received? We received one email that was public. Do we read the emails marked public comment? There was one from Monica.
No, I think we just contribute, make sure that Mrs. Kennedy has...
Okay, it just goes to the minutes, okay.
Bruce, do you want to announce if there are people on there that want to do, raise their hands, because a couple of people have come in.
If there is anybody left on this list who would want to offer public comment, please raise your hand. If not, we're going to shut public comment down. We are going to shut down public comment and move to our consent agenda. Do we have warrants, Mr. Cole?
Yes, we have several warrants. The first warrant, I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $68.45 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes unanimously.
The next warrant, I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $1,817.60 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second?
We have second, Sheila, we didn't second it. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
The next warrant, I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $2,257.11 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second?
Second.
Second, Sheila, we didn't... Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes unanimously.
The next warrant, I move that the following named bills and payrolls of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $28,299.34 be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account. There are no conflicts.
Second?
Second. Sheila has seconded it. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Passes unanimously.
And the last warrant, I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $357,376.60 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Let's give that one to Mr. Callahan. It was tied, but let's give it to Mr. Callahan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes unanimously.
That's all the warrants.
Thank you very much. We have a set of minutes from 9 to 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
So...
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, great. Discussion? Mayor Holliday?
There's just a couple of clarifications on, I guess it would be page four. Miss Kennedy, we live under where Pam Healy was providing information on food service, then Ms. Falding gave some, a question and comment. There's a strange D and a period there that shouldn't be there. No, hang on, I'm just trying to get to the right page. This would be page six, where after Principal Miller presented, Mr. Callahan asked what happened in the second half of Wednesdays, and there were two conflicting answers. I just wanted to be sure we could clarify that. Answer independent study, and then answer small group stuff, the day will be full.
What was that?
This was after Tim Miller.
I have that.
Okay. After, and Brian asked what happens on the second half of Wednesdays, and one answer was independent study, and the other was small group stuff. So which is it? Is it independent or is it group study?
It's...
Both.
It's both.
Okay, that's fine. It's not clear. Can you just make that a little clearer? Mrs. Kennedy, that both independent study and small group activities will be occurring.
If it helps, I got the sense that Mr. Miller was saying independent of the teacher, not like each student, and that Ms. Rossi was implying that there were some things that kids could do with a partner, still be independent of the school and the teacher.
Budget-based.
Okay, but it makes sense. It just, it wasn't really clear.
We can clarify that.
Then this would be page seven. Can we have a better definition of synchronous and asynchronous?
Yeah.
We can...
Synchronous is live connection, asynchronous is more than follow-up work.
Correct.
So I just, I think that that's important to clarify that, particular piece. Hang on, one sec. I just think these notes are really, really important because they contain a lot of information for parents about what we're doing here. After, I'm going back to page four. Steve Burkhalm presented information about the facilities, and then I guess there must have been some conversation about the CARES Act and ESER monies received, because after Steve's presentation, it says Mayor Holliday stated that additional monies had been received. Can we clarify that, please, to add the ESERS and CARES Act almost to $900,000 to support the reopening of the schools?
I'm having trouble hearing what you're saying.
Okay, so do you see where I am?
Yes, I know.
Okay. So I just want us to add, Sean will help you or Nancy with that piece. I think it's really important that we clarify that the monies received was from the CARES Act and the ESERS grant in order for us to reopen schools relating to all the COVID expenses, and we received close to $900,000 to do so. Ready? Nancy?
Yep, about eight.
Eight, okay. Thank you.
On the second to last page, above where Mr. Hodgson starts speaking, it says that we were talking about the daily health screening. It says that David Hawkeizer asked how, and the answer was download an app. We need to be clear that it's not an app, and that parents are not downloading anything. There's a Google form, it's a website that parents can go to, but we're not downloading
Can I ask, after we have approved these minutes with changes, that we provide a link to plug in to that comment, to Mrs. Kennedy, the link for where parents have to connect?
Yeah, that link's been going out.
I'm sure it has.
Daily basis.
Actually, it would be nice to have live links in those, you know, for some of these areas, like athletics, this is where you find information. I think it'd be nice to add some live links into these.
Are we ready to vote on approving the minutes with these changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None?
Same.
One abstention. Mr. Reardon. We, I need a motion that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, possible litigation, and legal matters, and that we will be coming back out into a public meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hawkeizer, and we have a roll call vote.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Reardon?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Ms. Falding?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkiser?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Holliday?
Yes.
And Mr. Mandra?
Yes. If we can adjourn next door. In our return to open session, is a memorandum of agreement with the Newburyport Instructional Assistance Association for a vote. Do I have a motion to approve that memorandum?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Do we need a roll call vote? Mrs. Kennedy?
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Holliday?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkiser?
Yes.
Mr. Cole? Mr. Menon?
Yes.
Ms. Falding?
Motion passes.
And Mr. Reardon?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We can sign off on it. Mayor Holliday, did you want to talk about the open meeting?
Certainly. We've had an executive session, and we have scheduled a follow-up meeting, executive session for Thursday night at 4:30 to continue our conversation, and we will come back into open session, should we be able to reach a decision at that point.
Number seven on the agenda is the Special Education Learning Models Update. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Gallagher.
Hi, this time, I just wanted to bring up...
Hi. At this time, I just wanted to bring up Nancy Quatch, who will kind of give us an update on all three learning modules that we have out there and how we're addressing some of our special education issues. Miss Quatch?
Good evening. Hi. So we are all back at school. We have three models. We have the hybrid model in which students are coming in two days a week and receiving services face-to-face. And then the other three days, they are receiving services synchronously and asynchronously. And then the remote academy, students are receiving services remotely. And then cohort C, which of the students that have been identified as high needs are coming in four days a week. And that varies in buildings, but again, they are getting face-to-face instruction those days and getting... And then the fifth day, they are receiving their services asynchronously. Parents are being contacted to develop the learning plans, whether it be the individualized remote learning plans or the learning plans for the hybrid model. And then those plans will be going out the end of this week, early next week. So they will be, and the purpose of those plans is to identify how the services on their IEPs will be delivered differently than they would be if we were in a normal educational setting at this point.
Does anybody have any questions for Nancy? Mayor Holliday?
Do you have legal challenges from parents regarding the schedule and what's happening at this juncture?
There are, we, there has not been any yet, but I think that we are working diligently to avoid that. We will be meeting with parents. We are getting legal counsel in terms of what we're calling COVID impact in terms of services. And we will be discussing how we're going to address that with students.
You heard two parents tonight who spoke and spoke very highly of the work, but they want more.
Yes.
You know, I think most parents want their children back.
Most children want more. I mean, most parents want more. And we understand that. But due to the pandemic and we've, and due to the space, and we needed to prioritize who could be, you know, who would be coming back into the buildings.
Follow-up question. Are students who are out of district placement, are they all going to those programs?
It depends upon the placements. They're all going to the placements. Some are in session five days a week and some are doing a hybrid model and bringing them back gradually. Or some have two cohorts in which they come, some come in the morning and then another cohort, like they would come every morning. One cohort comes every morning for a week. And then the other cohort is home in the afternoon and they get remote lessons and then they switch the following week. It's a variety. And if the school is small enough and there are a few, and they have the space, they're all back and attending every day, all day. But it depends upon the school and the space and the numbers.
Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate the update.
Any additional questions for Nancy? Ms. Riordan?
Nancy, I've heard from some parents who are a little apprehensive about the attendance. They seemed unclear. And they have students that maybe aren't, maybe they have challenges getting them in front of the screen. And I wondered if you could just clarify what they should do if their student is not willing to participate that day.
I think what we are seeing, that is something that we are addressing on an individual basis and talking about what we could do to accommodate that and go asynchronously. When a family has chosen an alternative on a given day, alternative program other than the public school, that will be an absence. But we are working with families to accommodate that because we realize there are going to be days that it's going to be very, very difficult. And we recognize that.
Additional questions? I actually do have one.
Sure.
Nancy, when you talk about we're contacting parents, what's the process? Who is actually doing the contacting?
Their special ed layers on a case manager is reaching out to their parent, the parents of their children on their caseload, discussing the services on the IEP, talking about what services will be synchronous, what services will be asynchronous, what's going to be different in terms of how they are going to be delivered, how accommodations may be different. And then, you know, when would the parent like to be contacted? How often would the parent like to be contacted? All of that is being discussed. There's like six questions. And then there, and the schedule, the child's schedule is also on that learning plan, whether it be the individualized remote learning plan or the learning plan. And there is also all service providers' contact information. So their name and their email and, you know, what their role is. If it's a speech and language pathologist, occupational therapist. So they, all the contact information is there. So a parent doesn't have to, will not be scrambling to figure out who's my, it's right there.
And again, you mentioned that as some of these issues are presenting, you're looking at them on a case-by-case basis. So parents should be encouraged to raise these concerns during those meetings or with you?
Yes. And I think the, probably the most frequent is everyone would like their child in four days a week. And we do have criteria to address what is considered high needs. And that was, you know, laid out in the plan for reopening schools.
Any additional questions for Nancy? Mr. Hawkeizer?
Our, two questions real quick. Are our liaisons grade level based or grade span based?
For the most part, they're grade-based.
Grade-level based. So...
For the most part, not always, but for the most part, yes.
And do they at times get to travel? So like, do families come in like first grade and get to meet somebody and stay with somebody for a couple of years? Or are they meeting new people this year?
It depends upon, David, it depends upon the programming. So if it's, it varies based on the program and the school.
And just the last question, to piggyback on the mayor's question from earlier, you said offering asynchronous services. Can you?
So it would be, so for instance, a preschooler cannot tolerate sitting in front of a screen for a whole lot of time. So an occupational therapist may develop a lesson, a game, an activity that is recorded and then, and the materials are sent home. And then that can be done asynchronously with a parent or sibling so that the child is not required to be sitting in front of the screen the entire time.
Makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? Terrific. Thank you, Nancy.
You're very welcome.
I know you guys have been working really hard. The superintendent's report.
All right.
Sharpen your pencil there, Mrs. Kennedy. There's going to be a lot of information for you.
Next, I'll use pictures next time. That way we can, you know, so thumbs up for opening, you know, schools. I just want to, you know, first of all, thank Nancy and our Special Education Department and all the work that they've been doing throughout the summer. And, you know, we continue to tweak those plans and do the best that we can to meet the needs of all students. The opening of schools, I think we had a very successful first week, last week. And every year, it's always challenging, even when you have your planning for three months and the environment is constant. There's always, you know, a lot of work that goes into planning of a reopening. Obviously, this year was very challenging with reopening in a pandemic. And I just wanted to thank the teachers. And right now, a lot of the problem solving is happening with teachers and parents, you know, as the students are at home with the remote. And what's really nice about this year and this concept is having the students in. So during a lot of the training we're doing for the, you know, the safety protocols and health protocols, we're also working with students on Google Suites and Google Classroom and the technology at all grade levels. So the students are part of the class in the hybrid model. And I think that's been very, very helpful for the students and the parents at home. And also, I think all the planning and the anticipation, the big picture planning that we did is paid off. And I think in that first week, you know, as we said, there's always going to be hiccups with any type of reopening. But I think this year, coming into this school year, the model that we have with students that are in person in the hybrid and also at the remote, and then also our remote academy, has seemed to, for overall, been going pretty well. And our idea is for our students, especially the remote students, to continue to work with the teachers. And really, we're working with our students and having them, you know, not to panic as there are glitches that may happen. The other benefit this year, too, is having our tech department onboard. And we have a ticket system. So a student that is struggling with technology, for whatever reason, at home, or a parent that's struggling at home with the technology can submit a ticket. And our tech support has dealt with those usually within that class period immediately. So there, the last few days, we're getting less and less of those tickets being submitted. And our tech department's done a nice job in responding to some of the technology issues when they occur. I think overall, the health and safety protocols, I think, we're in good shape. As, I know after our finance committee meeting, we did have some students touring last week. And some of the school community members that came to that meeting in the morning saw some of the classrooms. So it is vastly different. But I think the training that the nursing staff and our teachers and the work that they've done with the students on wearing masks, the social distancing, the hygiene and hand washing, the students are getting into that system. So I think that that's been great, you know. And we, as we all know, we've had a couple of cases at the high school with COVID, but those health protocols and safety protocols that we've established seem to be pretty effective. So that's been, you know, a positive with the health protocols. The arrival in typically, you know, arrival and dismissal times with reopening, especially in the beginning, takes a lot of time. But I think one of the silver linings in this is we are maximizing all of the doors in all of the different schools. So as students are coming in with cohorting, we have, we're using a lot of the entrances and exits, but you cohort the students around the building. So our arrival and dismissal times have been a lot less chaotic than we were anticipating. And I imagine when we're back to normal and fully in person down the road, that we probably will utilize some of those procedures because they've been pretty effective. I think for us and, you know, for the parents, this is a work in progress. So although we've had success with reopening, I think there's things, once we're in, in the schools, and we've gone through a couple cycles, a couple of weeks, we're going to continue, you know, to tweak and make things, you know, even better. Our lunches, as you know, the cafeterias are a lot different as we are utilizing the six-foot distancing. And right now, more students, talking to Pam Healy, more students the last couple of days have been bringing in lunches and not purchasing the lunches. So we're monitoring that. And the other piece is part of the reopening is working with the principals and the district leaders to develop surveys for students and for parents, along with staff, so we can get input on things that are going very well and some of the things that we can continue to modify. So I think that that's for us, you know, going to be really important to gather feedback throughout the process. So that's overall. The cohort B was in for two days. Cohort A started today, and the cohort A will be back in tomorrow. There were some questions, I know, with the synchronous and asynchronous and attendance. As school committee Hawkeizer will know, the state is requiring attendance and participation and also requiring time on learning while at home and also within, in person. So I think that, you know, for us, as we were saying, modifying our remote and also the hybrid model as we move forward. So there's going to be flexibility with the asynchronous, especially at the younger levels. You know, as we're working on the students and the work that they're doing at home, and the state's requiring, you know, half of the day in front of, for the older kids, half of the day in front of the technology with the synchronous, the live instruction. But obviously, as Nancy Quatch referred, yet at the younger levels, grades one, two, and three, having students in front of the computers at home is not a great model for us. So we're utilizing, I think, common sense here in Newburyport, and we're monitoring attendance, not only with the synchronous and the morning check-ins, but also with work submitted, with Google Hangout, with the projects that the students are doing. So we're monitoring that participation that way for the students that are at home. So there, for the parents, there is, you know, as, as we were saying, there's going to be flexibility with our, the schedules and gathering input from parents, students, and staff in those tweaks down the line. The other piece is also on concerns. There were a couple concerns with students turning on the video. So from a lot of the staff surveys, not staff surveys, the end of the year survey that went out to parents regarding some of the things that went well with our spring remote and some of the things that we could improve on. One of them that we received from students and parents was having the cameras on while the students were at home. Some students were not showing their picture and they weren't in the class and they could all get an ice cream, you know, during the spring remote. But the changes, I think, with the state, they, you know, for accountability. So for us, and with the cameras on, we're working individually. So if there are students that have, you know, a little anxious with being on camera, it's almost similar to students that are shy presenting. So we have our adjustment councils, our principals, and our teachers working with those students because eventually we want them to participate. But they are making the modifications, accommodations for those students. And I think right now, a lot of the synchronous is the teacher, the videos on the teacher for the most part right now. But eventually, with the collaboration that we're looking to utilize through Google Classroom, students are going to have to have their, you know, eventually, their videos on so they can participate, you know, with the class. But that's, you know, we're easing that in and we're meeting the students where they're at, especially with video in the classes. So that's, and as we were planning that out, we also, in the summertime, we were talking about video and we had adjustment counselors and team teacher leaders and principals talking about the what-if questions, what if students are afraid or anxious about having their video turned on. So there are strategies that they're utilizing and working with those families regarding with the concerns of the video. So I wanted to just clarify that for everybody. So I wanted to just clarify that for everybody. The other piece was on transportation and I had a couple of phone calls from parents and working with Nancy Lysick out there. So our goal right now is when we sent out transportation, we sent that out in June, not knowing what our models are going to look like. So we're going to continue to monitor what the hybrid model is right now, how often we're bringing students back, how often people are utilizing the transportation, we'll monitor that. And as we said, if, if it stays this way for the next six months, then obviously we'd be reimbursing families and just charging them for the days that they're utilizing the bus services. But right now, we're just kind of similar to what we're doing with our teachers and the schedules is we want to get into a system, get into a rhythm and see how things play out. But similar to what we utilized last year for the kindergarten reimbursement, once the state said we're going full remote for the rest of the year, we reimbursed our kindergarten families those two to three months. So we'll monitor that transportation right now. The remote academy, I won't go into a lot of that detail because we put that in the packet. But I just, you know, once again, you know, these, the, the word hybrid, remote academy, all of these things four or five weeks ago were just, you know, starting to come about and they weren't part of, you know, dialogue in the educational world here. But I just, the remote academy and getting information on how many families were going to utilize full remote, developing our staff around that, utilizing our leave teachers to assist with that, putting that together. And I think right now, the, the product that we have for students that are staying home for various reasons, I think that remote academy is, is looking, you know, it's going very well right now. And, you know, we're happy with utilizing our teachers and not sending off our students to some other outside program and some other outside company that would be educating them. So it's really proud of that. That was a lot of work and I want to thank the teachers and the people who really pulled that off in a short period of time. The, my last piece is the, the metrics. So we're still going to utilize in our, our public health metrics in the school buildings to look at. So those metrics, if those metrics are staying the same, so we have metrics that would lead us to full remote and we have metrics that are keeping us where we're at and then metrics that would bring more students back. So, you know, as we're looking at and working with Kathy Ricchio and everybody, our goal would be that things stay the way they are with low cases, to utilize that remote Wednesday. Because if you recall, we really wanted to, you know, health and safety is our number one priority about bringing students back. And so we utilize that Wednesday right now for cleaning and allowing our custodians and Steve Berkholm and his crew to thoroughly clean the buildings. If he feels, and they've been doing a great job, even at night and in the morning before schools, feel that we can get that cleaning done and the cases stay the way they're at, we'd be utilizing that Wednesday. That's a full remote day for another in-person day. So grades one to eight would be going cohort A one week would go three days a week, cohort B would go two. And then the following week cohort A would go two days a week and cohort B would go three. If that's, if everything is going well and our systems are in place and we're very comfortable. And then the idea right now is at the high school, we're at 25%, but we'd be looking to increase that to 50% capacity. Once again, following the metrics that we've laid out within our public health document. And then the date we're looking at for that would be November 2nd. Where we would increase more in-person contact with students. Obviously, there's a lot of details that we would need to work out, but in general, that's our thought process. We're also looking at that time, working with some of the health professionals. We feel is a, is a good time, that November 2nd, because it is before the Thanksgiving break. And as you know, if you have students that are in college, many of the colleges are shutting down around Thanksgiving and extending the winter break. So we'll be having, I think, many college students back, living with their families. And that would be a good time to reevaluate of where we're at, you know, around their Thanksgiving daytime. So right now, that's, that's our goal. And, you know, I just can't say enough about the faculty, the support staff and, and everybody in, in our system. And I know there's been a lot of work that's gone in. And I just want to say from working with all the unions in June, our goal, and this union's goal was to be back in person or having students back. They really looked at that as a, very important to this district. And all's we need to do is just to make it as safe as possible. And I, I think that, you know, we, we have accomplished that. And so that's, that's kind of the, the opening. I think I might be doing updates like this throughout, throughout every, every week, kind of seeing where we're at. Especially, you know, you know, with the cases and kind of, we're going to have to monitor this, the health, the health cases around us. So that's my synopsis of reopening schools. And I got to visit all the classes and I'm pretty sure most of the students were smiling. There could have been a few sticking their tongue out underneath their mask, but I couldn't tell. I think Mr. Hawkeye's is sticking his tongue out.
Are there questions for Sean? Brian?
Thanks, Sean. I think if the, coming back in more is a good plan. I don't want to be on the spot, but I guarantee there's going to be dozens of emails saying, "That's awesome." But is there an actual number where that will, will go back on that idea for the second? Like is over, like say we're, what, .51 the other day? So what is the low number? And I think people ask this in a couple of meetings, we know with the 4%, is there a number? Or is it a, let's wait and see, hyper-local cases and what number they are versus a state?
Yeah, I think, I think there's a, I think you add a lot of the, the metrics in, so the state's using that, that 4%. But then we also monitor like some of the other criteria that's, you know, in our health and safety protocols. And then working with, you know, our local health professionals. You know, we're, we're very fortunate where we have some, some people that can really let us know, you know, we're in a good place, you know. I think right now, if we maintain our numbers now, then that November 2nd date, I think, would look pretty good.
Mr. Hawkeye's here.
If we're going to, if you're going to be able to bring kids back to three and two, like flip it and use this Wednesdays to utilize, can parents expect that right now, if there's their kids on Monday, Tuesday kid, that they could stay, a Monday, Tuesday kid, and then just alternate the Wednesdays every other week? So instead of going like every two days, people have to come? Like I'm just thinking about people who might have
A job?
Plans or jobs or that sort of thing set up so that they could, you know what I'm saying? It's like an A, B, an A block now who goes Monday, Tuesday could still be Monday, Tuesday, but every other week they also get Wednesday?
I think that, yeah, we'd have to.
I'm just, I guess I'm just asking like to try to, to try to keep, if we could try to keep families' schedules as consistent as possible.
Right. So our thought process was if you're cohort A, then this week you'd have the Wednesdays. We'd let people know. So you're going to go on this Wednesday. Cohort B, you know, they would take the next Wednesday. So cohort A would go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And cohort B would go Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Right.
So they're really looking at.
That's what I'm talking about. So the families would still be on the same days.
Correct.
Okay, that's great. I guess my next question is a little off topic, but it was about the website.
Yep.
And how that's looking. I only saw, I don't know if any of the other schools have, but I noticed the, the Knox Middle School has a pretty amazing, like, side website?
Yes, that's what, yes. I'll just, I can follow up right now. So we, we took that idea and working with a school committee member, Kelly, and he told me a lot about, you know, the, I won't use the company, but the website that has been geared, it's very clunky and it's hard to upload and make things very easy. So we took that same idea on our website, similar to what Knox did. And we just uploaded a district reopening. So it's right out there. So when you click on it, it brings you to a, a whole new site with a lot of our information. So hopefully people will be able to click on that tonight and, and see the difference. So, and right now, we're updating a lot of those, you know, we have the health and safety. We have district communication that's gone out. We also have the school schedules on there. And then we also, even with a lot of the work we've been doing with cultural diversity, we have that piece because there's been a lot of communication around race and racism. So, so I think that's one way of getting around fighting with the, the website. And I think down the road as a district, that's something that we're obviously going to take a strong look at on upgrading, you know, the, the website.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Sean, just to follow up on Dave's question about the Wednesday and being able to help parents plan, do you have a sense of when that's going to happen? Or when a decision's going to be made about going with the Wednesday?
Yeah, I think, you know, for us, we wanted, because we just started and there's still, you know, a lot of work in the sense of the, the protocols, the cleaning protocols. So for us, I think it's really going through a couple of cycles and then feeling pretty good. And then also, we have to work out a lot more details, but we'll be able to notify parents on what that's going to look like. Our target date is the Monday, the 2nd, November 2nd.
So starting that week, your target date, if all health metrics are that
Correct.
We would start having more kids and more.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
Any additional questions? Great. You know, I, I appreciate all the work that you and your staff have been doing, that the faculty have been doing, that the support staff have been doing. I know that they've been in touch and I know you have spent a lot of time on the phone with parents as well. And we will continue to, to do that, to support parents.
Can I just, one, just one last thing, because I covered a lot of, I just want to say, I think for all of us as educators, the easiest thing for all of us to do is to have this all students back because that's our wheelhouse. So this modification is, I think, difficult. But I just want to say to the parents that having the students, like our energy as a district on that Thursday went up to 100% just because the kids were back. We were, and I just want to say how amazing our teachers and IAs were. Because as I visited all the classrooms, they, you could just see them back in their wheelhouse. So a lot of this work was planning and not knowing what it's going to look like. But having the kids back the last few days has been really motivating for this faculty. And I'll tell you, my last little story is preschool is amazing because they're all wearing masks and their masks are about two inches wide. So it's the cutest thing I've ever seen. But it's, it's been great and we just got to stay together, keep working together and, and dealing with these issues, you know, as they come about. So.
Mr. Cole can comment if he'd like, but after FinCom, he and I stuck around and we walked around and met some of the teachers. And I couldn't agree with you more. The enthusiasm was tremendous and the amount of preparation is terrific. Particularly, I think, at the Knox in terms of creating that, that easing in transitional curriculum for the first couple of weeks. The teachers were enthusiastic and actually one teacher overheard us talking to another teacher and came into the room to tell us how enthusiastic he was about, about the model that had been developed. So I appreciate that. I don't know, Steve, if you wanted to add?
Yeah, no, it was, it was really nice to see. It's clear that a lot of work has gone into keeping the rooms especially clean and clear. It was nice to see everybody have like a box of supplies and kind of like a workstation separate, you know, at each desk. It just seemed very, very well thought out. And, and, you know, the teachers often would explain things that, you know, were evident that they're very organized around it. So I, I especially appreciate all the planning that went into setting that up. And I'm sure it really helped the kids ease into it because when those, when the, when the students first came into those classrooms, I'm sure they were a little stunned to see everything spread apart. So the fact that things were organized in such a way, I'm sure mitigated against a lot of that trauma, if you will. And I'm sure they settled in right away and the teacher's enthusiasm can only serve to complement that. So it was really nice to see.
Thank you. Subcommittee reports. Join Ed met today, Mr. Redden?
Yeah, Join Ed met. We had a pretty quick meeting. Some of the city councilors just had some questions about back to school that Sean Superintendent Gallagher handled. Well, that's pretty much it.
Finance met last week, Mr. Cole?
Yeah, went over a few things. One was the end of the year fund balances that have been able to provide a little more than a million dollars to help with the FY '21 budget, which is a good thing. A lot of those savings obviously are from, you know, being closed for part of the, you know, FY '20 year. And we also talked about staffing and an update on where we were with hires. And I'm not sure if there's been hires since we met, but there's only a few positions. Like three of them are like one-year leaves, if you will. And I don't know, I know there's just five listed for the district, three of which are one-year leaves. And I'm not sure if those have been filled. And we also talked about the, the grant application as well, which I, I assume that was the Esser grant and the COVID grant, which we mentioned earlier tonight totaled somewhere between $800,000 and $900,000.
About $800,000?
$800,000, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's, that's what I added up to, but I, someone mentioned a higher number. So it was, it was good news on that side that, you know, we had some resources to put into FY '21.
Policy, Mr. Hawkeye's here.
We have not, we need to, we need to come up with a date. I think things feel, I know Sean's going to disagree, but I think things feel a little settled down now. Maybe we can get a, a date. Start putting some more things on your plate.
There you go.
I mean, the last time we had a conversation, it was all about fundraising. It did address some politics which might be relevant coming into election season in schools. So maybe in October, pick a date.
Sounds good. Superintendent Valuation? All right, have you finished?
Yes.
Superintendent Valuation hasn't met, but the mayor and I need to.
We had agreed after, you know, things were just too crazy this summer and ending out the school year last year. So we had submitted a letter to Sean based on our vote that we were renewing his contract for three years and that after school opened, which it did last week, that we would begin putting together evaluation. So Superintendent Gallagher, I asked you if you would reach out to other superintendents to find out if they were using that same. They are. I was afraid of that. Okay. Can we bring Nick back as a consultant?
Yeah, I'm up for it. I just wanted, you know, I just thought of one last thing and talk about the pre-planning. So all of our air purifiers, Steve Berkholm, we ordered 95 air purifiers and they all were in last week. And we're putting them as extra precautions in all those interior rooms and the offices throughout the. Because as you know, you're hearing a lot of the back orders for the air purifiers in a lot of districts. So we were ahead of that and Oz came in last week. So Steve's been putting those into the rooms.
Great. There's no further business, I will take.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Allos in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.